This special meeting for the consideration of the Upper Darby Charter School for the Arts shall please come to order. The first order of business for tonight is to appoint a temporary Board Secretary for this evening's meeting in Mr. Grant's absence. I need a motion to appoint Mr. Craig Rogers as the temporary secretary for this meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Any opposed? Sorry, any opposed?
No. Motion carries. Mr. Rogers will be the temporary secretary for this evening's meeting. I will turn over the presentation to the charter review team to make their presentation.
Before we begin, I just want to, for the record and for the individuals that are here in the audience, just give context for tonight's hearing. This is a hearing two on the consideration of a charter school application by the Upper Darby Charter School for the Arts. The first hearing occurred in the middle of December. This evening, the agenda spells out, consistent with the Board Policy 140 and its administrative guidelines, the process upon which the consideration takes place. There has been a kind of a bit of a change in procedure this go-around, and it's specific with to the issue of interviews. The applicant had, let me backtrack for a moment. The administrative review process spells out an interview process in which the review teams go out to either the site of the proposed charter, or a mutually agreed-upon site is established for reviews of the application. Through a correspondence by Council for the charter, they indicated that they were not prepared to participate in that process. So the administrative review team did not have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicants. Those questions may be asked this evening. So at this point, consistent with the review process, the administrative or the review teams will now speak to what steps they took to review the application, so that can be placed onto the record this evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ed Marshlech, the Acting Assistant Superintendent. With me up here tonight is our Director of Curriculum, Ms. Christine Kelly, Mr. Craig Rogers, who's our Controller, and Mrs. Kathy Kenya, who's our Supervisor of Social Studies, Arts, and World Languages. Behind me, we have our entire review team, which I'll introduce them in a moment. The process, we'll walk through what we did. Application was received on November 15th, and from that point, our team met weekly to review the application, develop some of our thoughts, and then also the presentation, which you'll see in a few moments. So our review team consisted of the members of the school district and community that you see listed on the board. Again, Christine Kelly and myself, Dr. John Council, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Dr. Manfree, who's our Director of Secondary Education, Mr. Frank Salerno, Director of Elementary Education, Ms. Eileen Hirschman, who is our Manager of Data and Information, Mr. Tom Fiddy, our Supervisor of Special Education, Mr. James Nielsen, our Supervisor of Special Education, Ms. Melissa Hardest, Supervisor of Special Education, again, Ms. Kenya, Ms. Nina Tyer, our Supervisor of Benefits and Compliance, Craig Rogers, Dr. Sakella Coles, who's a parent but also a community member, and Mrs. Erin Troy, who's also a parent and community member. So this is some background of the presentation overview, which we'll go through tonight. We'll talk about some background information about charter schools in Pennsylvania, our review process, also charter school performance in the state of Pennsylvania, and summary of the applicant presentation from December 18th. We'll also take a look at the Upper Darby School District and the Upper Darby Charter School for the Arts in a comparison of what is offered in both the application proposal and also it's offered here in our school district. In the areas of curriculum instruction, student services, and financial implications. We'll talk about the facilities in a summary. We'll also discuss parental and community involvement, and a summary and final report of the review team, which will be submitted as a formal document into the record at the end of this evening, as part of our administrative regulation for our policy on charter schools. This is a graphic that describes our review process leading us up to tonight. As I mentioned, the charter application was received on November 15th. The week of the 26th of November, our Acting Assistant or Acting Superintendent, Dr. McGarry, assigned the co-chairs, Ms. Kelly and myself, and we selected the review team to start the process. During the month of December and into the beginning of January, we met weekly to talk about the application, broke up into different groups in terms of area of expertise, and went back and forth with the application and questions that we had about the application and what our district offers as well. December 18th was a public presentation by the application or the charter. January 8th, the applicant formally denied interview with the school district via their solicitor, their attorney. And then tonight is our public presentation from our review team and also to the school board.
Mr. Marshlech, I would like to note that two individuals joined us while we were beginning the process, and I think it would be important that they introduce themselves for our court reporter, so we know who is participating on behalf of the applicant.
My name is Sharon Alexander. I am Council for the Upper Darby School District. I do believe we also have a gentleman that is on the phone. I want to make sure we get him to interview.
Mr. Kurtz, can you hear us?
Yeah, Dr. Kurtz is here.
Mrs. Alexander, you aren't the Council for the Upper Darby School District. You're the Council for...
Yeah.
Okay.
My name is Dr. Jan Solkov, and I'm here representing the part of the application having to do with the curriculum.
All right, thank you for that. And again, sometimes the microphones go in and out, so let's just make sure it stays on. I have to do the same thing as well. Mr. Marshlech, will you continue with the presentation from the administration?
Thank you. So here's a brief summary of the December 18th presentation from the school district's perspective. Dr. Carolyn Collins, who I see is not here tonight, or at least not as part of the team from the charter tonight, described her role in organizing the board and pulling together the board of the, excuse me, the charter application. She stated she had no role in the development of this, of the application, currently resides in trainer Pennsylvania, and at that time, on December 18th, there was no founder or founding members at that time for the charter to date. The application was for a school, a charter school in the Upper Darby School District. However, there was many inaccuracies that were described in the documentation provided, including listing Ben Salem as the location of where the application or the proposed charter would be held, which obviously were not Ben Salem. There was some working knowledge of the SPP, School Performance Profile calculations. However, the applicant and their expert could not really describe how the score is determined. You know, even more importantly, that's not really how schools are evaluated at this point in time under the new Every Student Succeeds Act. The P.A. Future Ready Index is now how schools are monitored, and this year is the first year of that. So again, the SPP is no longer used to evaluate schools or school districts. They spoke about hiring of a talented staff to increase student achievement through the arts. Year one, funding was to be in the form of a loan. Special education services such as physical therapy, speech, other related services will be outsourced, and class size will be no larger than 20. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kelly, who will take over the next part.
On the slide that you see here, these are SPP scores from the 2017-2018 school year. And what I would like to point out here is, and keep in the back of your head, that the intent of the law in 1997 for charter schools is to improve student learning and to increase learning opportunities, as well as to use innovative teaching methods. So if you look at the column that with the public schools, we will see that there are 48% that are achieving above a 70%. In the charter school column, you will see that 15% of charter schools are achieving a 70% here. Again, SPP scores are no longer used to evaluate schools. We have shifted to the Future Ready P.A. Index. However, this information is still used to evaluate teachers' teaching in a public school. In the course of the next few slides, you will see a comparison of Upper Darby School District on the left-hand side and on the right-hand side what the charter school application, the Upper Darby Charter School for the Arts is, has listed as part of their curriculum throughout their application. If we focus first on the school district side, the Upper Darby School District side, you will see that we have new materials pending Board approval in February for K through five throughout all of our elementary schools. We have research-based intervention programs, a list of them below, Wilson-Sande Foundation Foundations. And to, for students to qualify to receive those services, we use a rubric, and students are placed in that depending on need, based on data and a multiple, multiple data points. We also have the ability to move students in and out of a program if they are achieving, so we would move them forward, or if they need additional supports, we'd be able to give that to through our tiered system. Math, we use Go Math Series, a K through five program, and in math, six through eight, there are new materials for the 1920 school year pending Board approval on February 12th as well. In the charter school application, it referenced Storytown, which is 2008 copyright for ELA materials. They will use that for K through six. There are intervention programs, three that are listed, none of which are research-based throughout our research from the review team. ELA, there is no recommended program for grade seven through eight, other than the use of literature. Go Math would be used K through six. The math program for grade seven through eight, there is no recommended program listed in the application, and there's no MTSS systems for academics. Again, sticking with the same format, for social studies, science, and world languages, the Upper Darby School District is listed again on your left-hand side. Science program, we use the STC kits that are now being aligned closer to the new science generation standards. Social studies, we use a TCI program, which is interactive. In science, we have just adopted this program for grades six through eight, the Carolina Biological Kits. That was, this is the second year of implementation of that program. And social studies, we have adopted a new program, which was approved December 4th of National Geographic, which has digital access, as well as textbooks for the students, as well as professional development for our teachers in that area. We also have 89 middle school electives in the areas of technology, music, theater, dance, world languages, art, leadership, and health and PE. The charter school for the arts, social studies and science are built around topics of study, meaning, or what it says in the application, is that the grade-level teachers will choose themes from, from a different variety of ideas that are around the local area. There are, there is Spanish offered for K through six, grades K through six, one day a week, and for grades seven and eight, they're offered Spanish, French, and Italian. As we go into the arts programs that are available here, sorry, as we go through the arts program here, I want to show you a clip here of what we offer in our arts program throughout the district. This will show students at K through 12, just recently. In the interest of time, we're going to stop the video at this point. It is a six-minute video, so we will stop it here and we'll go back to the presentation. As we start to think about what the school district offers in the arts, where you have hundreds of students coming together to perform in a gallop, it is very touching and moving right there. It also goes to what we do in our school district to look at the arts education, music education throughout the district. Again, so going back to the comparison here, we offer art, music, library, physical education to all elementary school students, four days, on a four-day rotation, meaning art could happen twice a week, or music could happen twice a week, or a library, depending on the cycle of the week. We have an annual arts festival that students participate in. We have an annual gala that you just saw the clip of, with hundreds of students performing. We have school musicals. We have instrumental classes for students in grades three through five. We have school choir, orchestra, band. Our students participate and paint school murals, or they participate in an art show, and we have an art club, as well as annual school winter and spring concerts. When we look at the application, the review team pointed out that standards for music and art were outdated, that the library standards are not addressed at all during, in the application. Regular music classes occur each week. Visual arts occur at least once a week, dance at least twice a week, theater at least once a week, but there is an unclear timing in and out of schedule, meaning that some of the activities said that students have to be participating outside of school time, while others happen in school time. The amount of faculty that was dedicated to having visual arts at least once a week or dance happening at least twice a week is unclear at this point. Additional information for the school district. For the 2019-2020 school year, our students will have access to technology at a two-to-three ratio. They have Chromebooks, we have classroom projectors, we have numerous labs set up for students in our classes. We have targeted professional development where we, we bring in or contract with different consultants, such as McKay Consultant Group, where we're talking about learning targets. So our teachers are getting this training, which again, goes back into the classroom. We've had extensive PD on Collins writing, type one and type two writing. Making Math Matters, we have a consultant that comes in for intensive PD on teaching math, K through eight. And we also have the new implementation of our curriculum with English Language, Arts, Social Studies, and Math, which again, will have intensive professional development for our teachers in those areas. So we think about the class size. In the beginning of the slide, on December 18th, we were told that the class size would remain below 20 or at 20 for the charter school. Our average class size in grades K through five, you can see on the board, are below 22 students.
Okay, the next slide compares the ELL, English Language Learner, English Language Learned Students Identification and Reclassification Process. What was most evident and probably the most concerning was that the charter application had a completely outdated process for identifying ELL students, but also reclassifying them. Department of Education in 2017 recommended updates to how we classify and reclassify and identify students who were English Language Learners. You can see on the left-hand side of the school, our school district has the most up-to-date process for doing these as well. Charter school does not. The next couple of slides, I'm going to walk through Special Education and Student Services. Probably the biggest gap in between the school district and the charter application. As you can see on the left-hand side, what the school district offers is just about everything from A to Z in terms of what the federal and state laws require for special education, including early intervention, multiple research, and evidence-based interventions. We have updated, of course, definitions for intellectual disability, which I know you've heard many times, that presentation was referred to as a mental retardation by the charter application, which is obviously not appropriate at this time, this year. Recent IEP software upgrades and student information upgrades, our system. Our ESY process and programming is top of the line. We have a child count process, which is a mandate for all public schools. We offer a full continuum of services in our school district, and also have a extensive child find obligation to fulfill within our district schools and within the community. The charter really had no description or any details of any special education program or any type of services offered, other than the very basic, saying what they would do with related services and what they would contract out for. Many, if not all, the policies and procedures were a basic copy and paste from federal and state charter law, chapter 711. So you can see on the left-hand side of the school district, we have, again, speaking to our continuum of services, we offer a variety and just about every type of special education support. And again, the level of support, supplemental, I'm sorry, itinerant, up to full-time placement within our school district or outside placements. We also often offer gifted education, all-related services, we have Section 504 agreements. We also comply with the Section 504 law for students who are protected. We have student support teams in every one of our buildings, and again, a very thorough and a very, you know, a big support net for our students who are disabled, but also were not disabled, need extra support, which we'll get to in a few minutes. Charter application had a vague pre-referral process and child find process, even though they said it was extensive, I saw no evidence, and the review team saw no evidence of being a comprehensive process. There's no mention of data as part of the review process in terms of the types of supports that will be offered to students before they get referred for an evaluation. And most importantly, there was no mention at all of any psychologist on staff, which we all know is a key member of any student support team, looking at pre-referrals and supporting students academically and socially. Kind of blending into the Special Education and Student Services area, our school district offer, has a very well-defined multi-tiered support, or MTSS. We have it built into our daily schedule, which also includes our PBIS, or Positive Behavior Intervention Supports Framework. Our Code of Conduct has also discipline, but also includes interventions in how we intervene and support students who may exhibit difficult behavior or not understanding the rules and regulations of the school. We have a very thorough data meeting process, K to 12, in terms of how we review data, who reviews it, and how we use that information to plan for instruction and support students along the way. We have psychological and social work services within our district. We utilize the updated attendance law to utilize student attendance improvement plans, or SAIPs, as part of the intervention when a student does have truancies or has a number of truancies or unexcused absences. We have a Child Guides Resource Center, has satellite offices in a number of our schools for families in access, for mental health support. We also have a very extensive student assistance program within our district. The charter application, you can see, they refer to their truancy as truancy elimination plan, which is now outdated term, it's not used any longer. The Code of Conduct was applied in that application, which was from 2015, and it listed, again, in the review team's opinion, very punitive language and ways to discipline students. You think that the word "discipline" means to teach as part of a process, so when you think about that, this was, in our opinion, a negative way to approach a discipline. Very unclear approach to their framework and their idea behind how that discipline, there was no explanation of what it means and why they're doing the things they were doing in terms of student discipline and code of conduct. And really, the schedule, as Ms. Kelly mentioned, is very unclear in terms of when things will be offered to support students. There's no defined time in the schedule for interventions and supports. There was a mention of some ELL services being offered after school, if students could have, were able to do that, but if they couldn't do that, it had to be during the school day. Again, no defined process, which was concerning to us. Parent community involvement, as you can see on the left-hand side, this is just a small, you know, piece of what the Upper Darby School District has to offer in terms of how we involve our community and our parents. But of course, we have a district home school association. Every school has a home school association as well. Some of our Title I schools have a Title I parental involvement or use parental involvement funds and may have a Title I parental advisory committee at the building. We, of course, have school board and committee meetings, you know, twice a month to engage the community and parents, different topics that come up. If you look at our calendar, you know, our district calendar, there are things going on, but every single night in our district, it involves students and our families at our different schools. Our communication process through the district website, our Twitter, our Facebook, our parent communication to get information out, and of course, we have a formalized district policy for a complaint process for our families and our community members to utilize. In contrast, the charter application had a very unclear description of the extent and how they would involve parents. There was little to no mention of any committees or parent groups proposed, other than they would explore those ideas, and there's no defined complaint process or parental rights or communication policy or plan, other than they would develop one, which again, we thought we would see some type of, at least more defined explanation of what they would be looking to do to engage the families, the communities of the charter, or of the community, excuse me.
Charter schools do have financial implications to a school district, so if you look at the 2014-15 school year and how much per pupil expenditure was during that time, it was about $8,000, a little bit over $8,000. For a special education student, it was $23,000. As you look now at the 18-19 school year currently, about $10,000 is taken from or paid to the charter, about $10,000 for a regular education student, and $29,000 per student, per pupil to the charter. So that's money that is leaving the district to go to the charter school for, fund the education for a child. The facility summary, the site remains the same from previous applications, and the following concerns remain. The space for outdoor play for the children, inadequate dining facilities, the potential flooding for the first area floor, the first floor area, and currently, the building is occupied by a dental office as well as a Head Start program. They remain our concerns with the address that was proposed in this application. Our final thoughts as a review team are that there are vague and unclear statements about the educational program, that there are multiple, multitude of mistakes and misrepresentations throughout the document. The document proposal fails to compete with the Upper Darby Arts and Educational Programs, and there's outdated rules and laws in the area of special education, English learners' state standards, and national standards. Let me remind you, or can I remind you, that the purpose of a charter school is to enhance educational experiences, or to provide better opportunities or increase opportunities with students of the Upper Darby School District. This charter application, the review team feels that that does not do at this time. At this time, we would like to submit on the formal AR that we completed for the school district, as well as all correspondence that happened throughout this application process, all emails that came through agendas and meeting meetings.
And just so we can make it clear enough, we will not be recommending to the board that they accept the that they accept this charter application.
Just want to, for those of you watching at home, I want to mark then the binder of exhibits as Exhibit Number Six. So that'll be the full binder with regard to, and let me just read into the record what has been received, and that is a copy of the policies that are applicable. We've mentioned Policy 140 this evening and at other meetings. Communications, which appear to include correspondences with representatives of the charter. And note that there are communications here that will be removed as they appear to be privileged communications with an attorney internally, so those would be removed. We'll do that at the end of the, at the end of the meeting. In fact, what I'm going to likely do to move this along is have you look at these communications and remove those individual ones. And then additionally, we have the meeting agendas reflecting the meetings both tonight and also the meetings in December, and then some additional documentation appears to be with regard to charters in general. Now, and I also received what appears to be a formal, non-recommendation, if you would, that the review team does not recommend the proposed charter, which was signed by the chair, chairpeople of the review committee, and is a analysis, presumably analysis of what we just did. Okay. That will be Exhibit Seven. With that, there's a section within this process for a Q and A on the application. Remember, just so you understand the process, this is just the review committee, this is the group that votes. So now, it will be an exchange of questions that the committee has or that you may have with regard to any issues that were raised. So I will turn it back to Mr. Marshall Act with regard to the question and answer portion.
As you can see on the agenda, we have it broken down to six different sections. We'll follow along with that process. There's a number, you know, a handful of questions in each section, some regarding others. But we'll start with the governance structure. And I guess, if you would, if you could describe the process which parents and board guardians have to communicate with the founders of Board of Trustees?
May I please respond to that?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. There is an outline of a policy in the application that allows parents to raise their concerns with the administration regarding any of their concern with their program, students, et cetera. The administration is required to respond to it, and they're unhappy with the response that's provided, which just comes in before the trust meetings. Ever involved in the story, but throughout the application, we indicated that we originally had a parent in our program, we have expectations that they will be volunteering time, and that we want them to be an integral part of the process. Without the parents, the school will not have the success that we planned for this fall.
And this was not a policy as part of one of your policies in the appendixes, correct?
Well, we talked about, we haven't made the kind of policy as of yet, because we have to fill up an entire policy page, but we will have built in by the Board of Trustees and administration prior to the opening of the school. And if the district requests a copy of that, we'll be only too happy to submit it.
But you do have other policies you submitted as part of the application, correct?
Yeah, especially in the area of special education, which we felt was critical, because this is a comprehensive special education program that provides the need, all of the needs of our kids coming in. The school is 100% open without any discriminatory practices. We anticipate that we will have a significant number of special needs kids. As a result, we met with a legal firm, at least I did, and we put together a list of policies that we felt that, at least in the initial stage, would allow us to begin the process, including a very strong child find program and an outline of the services that we provided. In the budget, we have a significant amount of money for aside, for outside services, where we can hire a psychologist as needed, and various people that will be a part of our IMP teams, and of course, the therapist that will be needed to serve the kids directly. That's built in, and that's in the budget, and it's part of our process.
And we'll get to the programming piece, and I have many more questions about that, but we'll stick with governance. Terms of marketing, which communities in Upper Darby were flyers about this proposed charter distributed?
I can't answer that, because I wasn't responsible for that. Perhaps one of the other people there can tell you that. But it was within the confines, within the geographical areas of Upper Darby, township.
And when about was that done?
Most of it was done in, most of it was done in October, November, December. In fact, I believe there were some ads just recently in the local newspapers, as we are still building up a student enrollment pool, which we're now, I understand, of the official ones submitted by our attorney, which is, the number's around 160 or so, but that process continues to go on.
Did any member solicit signatures at a polling place this past November? Are you aware of?
That process was coordinated by the community, and the only thing I'd say is yes.
Okay. And what other, what parent groups did the founding board or did anyone who is a proposed founding member meet with as the proposed planning, with the planning for the charter?
That information would have to be provided by Dr. Collins and other people that she met with. They held a number of meetings on-site, and some of them are listed, where they invited various members of the community to attend, and they also sent out the information on their website, which also helped us in the process of providing information, as well as the recent re-enrollment.
Ms. Alexander, is Ms. Collins coming this evening?
Ms. Collins is no longer a part of the charter application. Mr. Taylor will be stepping in to her role. I do apologize, he did not get off from work in time to be here at the start of the meeting today, but he is here at this particular point.
Okay, so I think there are a number of questions that come up this revelation. So Ms. Collins was here, she was the person that was in participating, effectively as the spokesperson for the charter. Her name is on the document that was submitted just two months ago, now she's no longer a part of the organization?
That is correct.
And then, this, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
He is a proposed?
He is a proposed board member, and I do believe he was also in attendance at the December 18th hearing.
Okay. So all, well, I don't know, he wasn't up, he certainly wasn't at the table in terms of representing the applicant at the time, or the application. But again, there, there's information cited by Mr. Kurtz, or Dr. Kurtz, I apologize, referencing back to things Ms. Collins may have done, and now she's no longer here to even respond to it. I think, I, you can understand the upheaval in the leadership is going to be a bit concerning. But anyway, can we move forward?
So just, you mentioned a little bit about the admissions policy we've read, but what is your admissions policy for the charter?
It's very clearly stated in the, in the application that there are, there are no policies per se. Any child, any parent can submit an application as a pre-enrollment, will be considered, there are no discriminatory practices on the basis of age, gender, religion, race, special needs or anything. All they need to do is apply, and based on their age and grade, we will then fill our classes. Once we reach more than 60 at any level, at least in the beginning, we will then do a lottery for that particular grade. So it's open, as is required to be by law, there are no, not, I emphasize, there are no reasons, nothing that can be used to eliminate any child who applies for their school.
And would Upper Darby School District residents or community members have first choice?
They absolutely are, support the Upper Darby children, so it's not even a matter of first choice. They, we are planning 360 kids, and if 360 students apply from Upper Darby, they all get admitted before any other student outside of Upper Darby geographic. As in other charter schools, students from the Upper Darby District could apply, they're not given preference, preference is only to those students who reside in the geographic boundaries of Upper Darby.
As we go on to staff and parent guardian and community involvement, could you please describe what parent involvement programs are available and what type of committees for parents?
Oh, you want me to turn that answer?
Yes.
Well, basically, we want, we want to have a parent advisory group to start with, that will be involved in the process. However, we anticipate doing some workshops for parents as a part of the opportunities that we provide for them, as well as invite them, and with our expectation that they will participate in school programs, that they will be involved in volunteering and in other activities. We're not looking to them for fundraising, we're looking to them for involvement. We will put together a field of parental workshop for their identification, and once the school gets established, and we're able to survey the needs of our parents. But that will be something that will grow as the school grows, because without the parent involvement, we don't believe our school can fulfill and meet its goals.
Are there any programs that exist currently at this point?
Well, it's a little premature for that, simply because we're not even at a school yet, but we are hoping that once we get approval, that at that point, we can then start developing some programs. Certainly, we have no staff, we have, we have no capacity to do any of that. So all we're doing right now is holding open meetings, as is at the proposed site of the school, outside agencies like churches and what have you, to try to at least inform parents of what we're trying to accomplish.
The Upper Darby School District offers various ELL programs for our parents and guardians in addition to what is offered to our students. What services will you be providing for ELL parents and their families?
Well, we're going to look at the, at any updates in law and expectation, and we will obviously...
Why wasn't this noted in the application?
That is probably on me, because what I had done was go to the, to the Commonwealth title, which regards with the regulations for limited English provision students, although with now full ELL, and was, and I basically was, currently, I pulled the information back to describe how we would use the placement process for students, and that we would be setting them up on the various tiers. If that has been, if that has been changed, it was my slip up, I missed it, and obviously, I will go back into the application and our process and bring everything up to date. But patiently, the key thing to understand is, we recognize that we will have ELL students, and that we are permitted to fulfilling all the requirements that are established by federal, state, and any local laws that are applicable to our students. And if there's any mistakes on it, it was all on me.
And just to clarify, this keeps going on and on. To clarify, what site did you go on to look for the, that information, and when?
It was, I pulled out of Title 22, Chapter 4 of the Civil Regulation, that talks with regards to a meeting the needs of limited English students.
And when did, when did you look at that?
Probably, probably, probably over a year ago. I didn't, I didn't go back to it, because I thought what I had was, was still applicable. It was minus bakery nights going on, and you do have new regulations for 2018. Apparently, from what I just heard from your team, there are, and I did not indicate that, and that again, it's on me, but it's one of those things that will be corrected, obviously, before the school can open. And obviously, the important thing is, as I said, is there's a recognition that we have an obligation to tune some.
Doctor, just so you're aware, the process for ELL students was changed in spring of 2017.
Well, and I missed it, probably before I made, probably when I wrote up that section. And that, again, that's on me. I mean, obviously, I should have used some outdated material when I, when I reviewed it, with this section up, and I thought it was timely, and obviously, I felt wrong.
Okay, we're going to move on to the educational program. I forgot to mention that was staff, parent guardian, community involvement, that was the last couple of questions. Let me just interject for a moment, because there was a discussion at the last meeting that there may be additional information shared by the applicant as relates to community interest or parent interest in the charter. Do you have any additional documentation to share with us?
I do, actually.
Any in this button, I do apologize. I do have the approximately 175 verified pre-enrollments, as well as approximately 300 signatures to submit into the record this evening.
Can you share that with me now?
Yes, I can move to have.
Yes, I can move to have those submitted now.
All right, I received pre-enrollment forms, just looking at it for the first time, as well as petition of support, and I guess this is just a...
It's just a...
A summary of the...
Yeah, just a comprehensive sort of spreadsheet there to kind of let you know what was in the packet.
Okay, so in the area of the educational program, student attendance, what happens if a student is absent or missing school for three days?
We would be following normal school procedures, in that when students are absent, we check in a number of days, and we would be contacting the parents in the home, if the child is going to... the child is having a problem. We also recognize that for certain number of days, we have to report that to the district so that they would know that the child has not been in school for, I think, a number of ten expected days, at which way, that one literally is stopped having any kind of consultation with that child until determination is made whether or not that child is dropped out or is just ill and is maybe not even made a completion door. However, as you said, we will have normal specifications where students will come to school every day and we will have follow-up meetings with parents when a student is absent to just check on and drop there as a normal school procedure that we will be adopting.
So specifically, what is that procedure when a student is absent for three days?
If they're absent for three days, they have a note from the doctor, send it to a new absentee. If it's not, then we have the option of making a home visit or maybe that the parent come in and give us an explanation as to why the child is not in school. If it's an indication that the child is not meant to be in our school or the parent has other issues going on, we would then have to make a decision between our counselors, our teacher and administrative team.
And is the charter required to follow the attendance law in Pennsylvania?
Yes, of course.
Okay. So will you be suspending or expelling students who have a number of unexcused or truant days?
That's generally viewed as counterproductive to throw already out while we suspend them. However, there may be a reason why kids are absent and if the reasons are determined to be inappropriate, then that would require bringing in the parent for a conference and trying to make a determination. If it is, as I mentioned before, lack of interest or if the child is in need, a child is having some kind of crisis, that we would try to work that out with the family. It is never be our contention to suspend children unnecessarily and at the same time reward themselves as of all these extreme conditions.
So you are aware, though, that in your code of conduct, you do expel students and suspend students who have attendance problems?
Yeah, yeah. And you talk about progressive discipline and kids would be suspended based on a progression of disciplinary incidents. We're not going to necessarily suspend a kid because he did something minor in practice two days, well, three days in a row or exactly. Like a change in influence of what we view as violence or things that are incredibly disruptive to school, to the class would be reason to giving a child an overnight suspension or perhaps a one-day suspension, which would require the meets with the staff to be able to the administration in order to discuss the problem because sometimes that's what takes to bring a parent to school.
Right, I guess, and I'm not talking about discipline, but in your code of conduct, poor attendance or unexcused absences is a reason to suspend students per your code of conduct and also to potentially expel students. So is that counterproductive in your view or is that what your policy is going to be for when students don't attend your charter?
Well, this is a project. I understand the discipline code is a draft, is what we're looking at. A final adoption of the code would be made once the school is approved and the board and administration has the chance to review it and make a final set of recommendations. You won't expel kids for attendance in extreme cases. I mean, and I, you know, that is, right now, I don't, that's how I feel. I'm just going to go into it. However, that's ultimately the decision of the administration and board and I will not be involved in the actual implementation of the school, of the school.
Right, but it is your perspective or your, I guess, value that it is counterproductive to suspend or expel students who have poor attendance?
Yeah, you're giving them excuse to stay at home legally and you're trying to get them into school and that has always been my philosophy, sort of the principle under discipline.
And currently, this is in your application to suspend, expel students if they have poor attendance?
Well, that's an option for the board and administration to kind of track out and make the decision as to what they finally will recommend. And of course, that would be sent all, once the service is approved, it would be sent home to the parents for their review and signature so that they know what the expectations are.
Dr. Kurtz, was this code of conduct created for this application?
Yeah, this is a, admittedly a fairly generic code. It needed a starting point and basically, when you establish a code, since you don't really have a working order that's going to fit, you need to be set and you don't have an expectation or staff, that it has to be human. And this will all be required that we do just that, that we give you some type of code under the charter expectation. What I was talking about is generic codes that we think of as a sign for one school to do.
Thank you for clarifying because the date on the bottom was November of 2015 and we just needed some clarification. Thank you.
Maybe that's what I, that's what I put together.
All right, so Dr. Kurtz, you mentioned the changes to the compulsory attendance law and how your school will follow it. What are the changes that your school will have to do? What are the steps that your school will have to do per the law if a student is absent or truant three or more days?
The first step the administration will have to do is to investigate exactly any changes that exist in the compulsory law and then based on that to establish the policies. If there are changes in anything we do, you'll have to be
Well, let's just, Dr. Kurtz, let's just clarify the question. I believe it was posed, what is your understanding of the fairly significant changes in the school code over the last two years as relates to truancy elimination and the protocols that are in place, which every public school in the Commonwealth has to adhere to and it was quite significant? So I think that was the question they were asking.
I'm not aware of those changes.
Can you clarify, you went in and out?
Pardon me?
We could not hear your response.
I'm not aware of those changes.
For the record, he said he is unaware of those changes.
What standards will be addressed throughout the curriculum, especially in the area of math and English language arts?
This charter school intends to follow all of the state standards from the Pennsylvania Department of Education and that is why I went to the website, downloaded those standards and included them in the application. So those are the, and they can be found in the appendices.
Thank you. Throughout the appendices, however, there are PA legacy standards there, there are common core standards and there are PA core standards. The PA core standards are the ones that were adopted in 2014 for math and ELA.
You have a question?
No.
Okay.
I think we're pointing out that the inaccuracy in the application based upon your answer.
I would like to state, as I did at the original hearing, that what we've presented is a starting point for the curriculum. The curriculum is a living document and it's not something that I can create or that one person can create, but rather, it is something that evolves. And so this is a great, what we've submitted is a great starting point to have a school that will focus on the arts and that will also combine an excellent academic education and we will bring in our experts and our teachers and our other leaders, educational leaders, who will have input into what the curriculum will ultimately be. This is a starting point for the purposes of the application because we don't have any staff members yet, but we expect them to get very heavily involved in it so that they can contribute their expertise to improving what we submit as an original starting point.
Now, I appreciate that and we do understand the curriculum, but we're talking about the standards, which are Pennsylvania standards, PA core standards. You referenced legacy standards in the application, common core standards and PA core standards. So the legacy standards are out of date, they're no longer used. So that's what, they don't really change a lot, they don't change with staff, that's what the state determines. But that's my only, and then follow-ups is based on standards, not the curriculum.
On page forty-two, the daily schedule exists. Could you describe that daily schedule for us, please?
Yes, certainly. Basically, as I was saying before, my phone kind of punked out on you. Basically, although many of the children are what we consider elementary ed and in elementary education, our classrooms are, they stay with the one teacher most of the time, they're not in a schedule where they move from period to period, to class to class. We did break it out to try to indicate how we're going to plan our academics and our arts program and integrate it. So what we basically have is a morning period where the students arrive and we provide their breakfast and at eight forty, our day would start with beginning greetings and review by the homeroom teacher. Since most of our classes
Dr. Kurtz, excuse me.
Through five are self-contained, they would then go right into their first academic period at nine o'clock and they would be either teaching English language
Dr. Kurtz, there was a
I'm sorry, specifically, I don't need a summary of the Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Are all students going to be following the same schedule?
Not per se, well, it's a generalized proposed schedule and it says proposed right on it. What it's trying to indicate is how we're going to try to split up the day to ensure that there are enough academic time set aside to implement our academic requirements as well as to provide additional time for the arts. Because every day, the kids, you see in that one section, and this could vary class to class, that the cultural arts would be on a rotating schedule as well as the fact that we do have every day for one hour, a full arts. So a kid could be in theater every day for, every day from two to three, or he could be in visual arts or whatever performing arts that the kid chooses, dance or whatever. But they would also be getting some of the others, some of it as well during the rotation, similar to what the Upper Darby School does in terms of rotating their arts with their phys ed and everything else. That would be provided, but we wanted to make sure we provided an additional arts program as part of the day because that is our emphasis so that the kids have that provided. However, in our academic periods, where possible and through the development of themes that relate back to the standards in each area, we will try to do some arts work. So if they're doing something in social studies and a period of history, they could be doing some artwork from that period and music from that period and dance from that period, et cetera, in order, again, to integrate the arts with their academics. But that, not every child, it's not a lockstep thing, but that's an approximation of a proposed daily schedule that we're looking to put together. It'd be a little more lockstep as the kids get into the middle school grades where they tend to, at that point, to departmentize by area for those children.
So Dr. Kurtz, or I guess the team also, when will the interventions be provided to students who are struggling?
Much of the, much of the study in terms of support would be done if they're, especially if they're special needs students, a lot of it would be in-class support. Teachers would be required to be in the classroom, working with the regular instructor and making sure the kids get that additional help, as well as ultimately, we're going to be doing some after-school activities that will provide additional help. In fact, I believe we indicated at high grade three, we're anticipating that all children will stay after school for arts and other activities.
Dr. Kurtz, just curious, is that stated in the application, any of what you're speaking to? I mean, the concern that certainly is on the board members' face that we're seeing here is there's a lot of things you're adding to your testimony that's just not in the application. And I think you need to speak to the vagueness of the application and a lot of the hypothetical things that could be occurring that just aren't in the application.
I believe some of that is in the application as such, and let me see if I can find the page numbers for that for translation. Excuse me one second while I look it up. Mandatory translation.
It's not limited to this one question, it's been throughout the evening, that's been the concern.
I know it's in there because I wrote it and I just have to find it.
Curious, another question that I would have, just from a governance perspective, Mr. Taylor, are you the applicant now?
Applicant?
Yes.
What do you mean by applicant? I'm a board member.
You're a board member?
Yeah.
Is there an applicant at this point?
You. Okay. Yes, I've just been informed that I'm stepping into Dr. Khan's spot, so I am.
You're the official applicant and let's just be clear because this is a transcript that's being put together here.
Clear.
You are the official applicant for the charter. When did you become the applicant? Did you become the applicant right now?
I don't think, we discussed this yesterday, I'm not sure that Mr. Taylor understood some of the technical terms, but we did discuss how we need to take over that role.
Quick question, have you seen the application?
No, I have not.
Okay. So, Dr. Kurtz, while you're looking for the information there, so I guess I'm trying to understand then if you're saying all supports will be offered in the classroom, so there'll be no pullout supports for special ed or for any other type of student support? Is that correct?
That will, no, I'm not saying that at all. Most support will be in class, but that doesn't mean that if a kid has a specific need, that the kid will not be pulled out of a subject to get it. We have built into the budget, reading specialists, math specialists and special ed teachers, they will provide services as determined and as much as possible be in the class, but where necessary, the students could be pulled out of a class to have that. That's typical school procedure and we would be following that.
Correct, but it's presumed then that they will be missing something if they're being pulled out. So I guess I need to know, what will they be missing if they are being pulled out? Because they
Well, again, it depends on the
Clearly, Chapter four, I'm not done yet, hold on. Clearly, Chapter four states that you have to be exposed to grade level curriculum within the ELA and math standards, they couldn't be pulled out of that. But are they missing in arts? Are they missing lunch? Are they missing, what parts of the day are they missing?
Well, that would have to be determined for the student. If it can be done in the class, obviously, it's easy because if they're being taught English, the reading specialist would work with the kid in that classroom in collaboration with the teacher. On the other hand, there's a need to do some specific learning, well, that the reading teacher has two options. One is to take some information provided for him or her and pull the kid out of the class and work with the kid for an unspecified period of time on those recommendations of what the teacher is teaching. Bottom line, if a kid is reading two years behind, then obviously, the reading specialist would try to bring that kid into a better level of reading.
Dr. Kurtz
That becomes an individual kind of thing, I mean
Dr. Kurtz, quick question.
Been there, done that.
We need to clarify too, in terms of governance issues, what is, are you going to have a role with the charter at all?
No, I'm not going to have any role with the charter. They might ask me to come in and do some type of board training and oversight for a while till they get off the ground, but as somebody coming into the school and working with the school, no, I won't be doing that on any kind of regular basis unless they ask me to come in to do something specific in terms of working with the administration, but I would not be running the school.
Curious, just, so it's questionable whether we have an applicant. The original applicant is nowhere to be found and you are speaking almost exclusively on a charter that you're not going to be involved in.
Well, because I wrote the application based on their request.
Who's request?
That's been my experience to do just that. That's been my experience to do just that.
Who's request?
Of, at the time, Carolyn, and a few people that were at the table at the day of our, our initial meetings. Would you be willing to write an application?
Well, the only people that were at the-
If we talked to you about what we want.
The only people that were at the table in our initial meeting was yourself-
Ms. Alexander is there. Ms., Mr.-
Well, Ms. Alexander was not-
Dr. Collins was there, as was her husband, Keith Collins.
I don't recall him at the table, but, but it's been a busy-
At the table right now is only Ms. Alexander. Mr. Taylor was recruited to become a member of the board by Ms. Collins, I believe, and did, did come to our first hearing. Beyond that, I can't speak to that.
Okay. We just have a few, a few more questions for you, and then we're gonna, we'll try to wrap it up. In terms of at-risk students, who's going to be a member, who will be part of your instructional support team that's referenced in the, in the application?
Instructional support team, you mean, in terms of, once the school has started and we start seeing kids with issues?
Yeah, it's, and I'll read you the first line. It says, "The school's instructional support team must take the determination of services." That's, so, so you do mention one in your, in your application. Who would the members of that team be?
Well, would be the principal, the counselor, the teacher. If it's, if it's viewed at some point that the kid might have special needs, we would call in a psychologist. But the basic instructional team is made up of instructional people, and the administrator, and counselor.
How about social worker?
As needed, not necessary. That would only be if you're getting to the point on, on a special education procedure in terms of placement, that you may or may not bring in social workers.
Well, I, I mean, I disagree with that. But on page thirty-five, it does mention social worker as part of your instructional support team. But I also want to make a point, too, that you mentioned earlier about funding of the school psychologist. You have no school social worker as part of your faculty list, nor a-
Well, not on a daily basis. We, we would not be able to, at least initially, to even afford that kind of service, especially if the school is so small. As the school grows, well, at that point, the determination could be made by administration. We need a full-time psychologist, or we need a full-time social worker. In the meantime, those services would be paid for on a per diem, as-needed basis, and it's provided for in the budget.
Okay. And is there a process that your charter has for determining which students will qualify for a Section 504 agreement?
For, I'm sorry, I didn't, I missed the question.
So does your charter have a process for determining which students would qualify for a Section 504 agreement?
If, if that's generally covered under, although it is not special, it's generally covered under the same requirements under special needs. If a child has a special 504 need, then, then the school would have to meet to determine, and that would be the administration counselor. Again, psychologist if needed, social worker if needed, and with a report, maybe in some cases from a doctor, who indicates there's a need for why this child needs a 504, and then it would be our obligation to provide services.
So are you saying you would simply go on a recommendation by a doctor, or by a team of, of-
It would be any number of, that those, that could come from parent, that could come from doctor, it could come from, from something that a staff member, a teacher saw, I think this child might have a, a problem, maybe we need to talk to the mom and see if there's something that we're missing, or that they haven't shared with us. But that basically, those claims generally come from, from the parent, or from, from doctors who are working with those children.
Okay. So my, my last question is, you know, you stated earlier that you'll be accepting, pretty much accepting all students, and you expect to have a large number of students who have disabilities and need special education services.
Yeah, we, we would be accepting all children, and it's not unknown that sometimes, some charter schools get a, get an unusual percentage of kids coming in with special needs, mostly from parents who've been frustrated, feeling that they weren't getting enough from the regular public school, real or not. They feel that way, and they look to the charter as an option.
Okay.
And if they apply, then all they have to do is complete the enrollment form, and, and we have to accept them ultimately.
So I guess I have two questions for you. Are you aware of the most recent research that's been released in December about charter applications and students with disabilities?
Well, we, I, I, are you asking about the district's special needs, or?
No, no, I'm asking you, or if anyone in your team is aware of any recent research from the University of Florida and Columbia University, about charter applications and students with disabilities.
No, I haven't read anything. I, I only know that in the large number of schools I work with, it seems as though charter schools, in many cases, get an unusually high enrollment in special needs, which puts a lot of pressure on them.
This research actually speaks to the contrary.
And they have to fulfill those needs as best they can.
All right, so, so going back to my, my first part of my question, that I didn't have a chance to ask yet, would be, then, if you accept all the students who have, who have special needs, what is your continuum of services?
What is the what?
Continuum of services.
As whatever the IEP recalls, calls for. And, and we would have to do an annual review to see how the student is progressing, whether academic or otherwise, and then make adjustments to the, to the IEP. But we're obligated, and we all know that, to fulfill all the requests in an established IEP. And oft, sometimes, not more than once, you will find kids coming into your school with IEPs that are either outdated, or, or not needed in terms of some services, or some services they do need are not indicated. So in some cases, you have to do a total new, new testing, and putting together a whole new process to determine those needs. It's a, for all schools, not only regular public schools like your own, but especially for charter schools, that's, that's a huge issue, and it's one that the school is obligated to, to complete.
Right. So I'm, I'm, I may cut you off, but I'm going to kind of get to the chase here, then. So, but what is your continuum of services? What does it look like? Be specific. What does it look like in your bill, in your charter? Because that's not the answer what you gave me. That's not the correct answer.
Well, I don't know what answer you're looking for, other than to say the services would be provided under the IEP, with the ongoing evaluation, and ongoing reports from the staff, from the teachers, people required for providing those services, as to the progress of the student. And that, as always, they have to bring in parents when they get ready, to prepare an evaluation for the end of year, as well as in mid-year, if that becomes obvious that needs to be done, in order to make recommendations of change, or to increase, or whatever.
Dr. Kurtz, Dr. Kurtz, let me, just to clarify that, that follow-up with the question with regard to special education. You, you've indicated this evening that you began preparing this document as much as maybe three years ago. At least, that, that was one of the references I heard. So my question is, in specific to special education, to what extent is this document reflective of the most recent trends as relates to guidance from the Office for Civil Rights, from the Office for Dispute Resolution? And let me, do you know what the Office for Dispute Resolution is?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And, and, and how does it contemplate any guidance from, from federal court in terms of a public entity's FAP obligation? What can you, how can you speak, can you speak to that?
Well, the only way I can speak to that is that the school would, would, would be required to hire effective staff-
That wasn't my question. My question is, what, this application, does it contemplate those ever-evolving and, and recent changes, whether it be guidance from, from the US Department of Education, from guidance from the Commonwealth, or through, through case law?
It specifically states that we would modify our program based on any changes in federal and state law.
You did not answer, sir, sir, you did not answer the question.
That is the answer.
No, well, then you didn't, then you haven't.
No, we have. By stating that we will, as required, make sure that we fulfill all modifications and changes in the law, that's all it tells you.
But I think that goes back to, remember that this process is to give an opportunity for the board to consider an application, and when-
I get that.
And, and so when there's another comment that it will broadly consider, for instance, in this instance, a student's need, without addressing the question that I know would be on the board's mind, is, is, have you read up on, on the recent trends in the Eastern District of Pennsylvania? What is the latest, what is, what is the-
Recent? No, no, not, nothing recent.
Right, and that was the question.
I don't know what you mean by recent. I, I stay abreast of what's out there, but I see nothing that says that we have to do a thing bigger, different than what we've established in there, and that's why I put in a phrase that indicates that we will modify. Because you know, I don't, it's down. Sometimes we don't know about it. If we have new changes, what do you, what do you make of it? It's something that-
Kurt, you're breaking up. Dr. Kurtz, you're breaking up.
I think we, uh- Part of it, that's why was my answer. That on page thirty-one, the paragraph that talks about meeting the needs of the students, talks about being, about making sure that we will modify and implement according to all relevant federal and state statutes. And had there been changes, we will be, we will make sure that we know them, and we will make sure that we implement them. We're not going to do something that's not going to serve our children.
Okay, so my, my very last one, I promise. Are you aware of Rose's Law, what that is?
I'm sorry, what?
Are you aware, are you aware of Rose's Law? You mentioned that you are keeping abreast of all the recent changes in the federal law, state law, et cetera, but are you aware of Rose's Law?
Rose's Law?
Yes, special education.
Hmm.
It's, it's a yes or no. I'm assuming you don't.
No, I have to say, I, I don't know what you're talking about.
So this, this was the, the law that, that was a federal, it changed the federal designation of mental retardation to intellectual disability. And as you mentioned, you were keeping it up, you know, up to date on new information in federal and state law, but clearly, it looks like you haven't.
Well, it talks, the law itself, to the best I recall, it's a federal, I think I read that it was federal, and it, they, they talked about meeting the needs of kids with intellectual disability. But it's not a law, per se, I believe, for us to react. It, it had something to do with IQ scales and something like that. But specifically, I can't answer you that, other than to say that I've only heard about it broadly. I don't know the, the whole aspect of the law. But it's, again, we will do whatever we need to do to make, make sure we meet it.
The administration is signaling to me that they have no additional questions beyond what they've submitted to, for board's consideration as it relates to their review. There is one note, for the record, that there was, there had been, or was going to be potential some questions as relates to fiscal operations and management. However, I do not believe your, your business manager is here this evening. So, so, so we will let our, or the conclusions of the administration stand on their own. At this point, because I believe the questions are done, we would be moving to public comment.
Hi, Jim Burrows, 447 Hampshire Road, Drexel Hill, Pennsylvania. So I had a lot of things to say, but first of all, I want to thank you for making the public comments after four-thirty PM. I don't know why you went so early last time. So I'm just going to ask, I mean, and the folks in the room, if you could, and I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, how many think that this is a good idea for our school district? How many would oppose it? I mean, I think that says enough. You know, I get a lot of ribbing, because I'm a kind of vocal guy, but I, you know, even the people who I usually have some banter online with, we're all in lockstep on this. I would like to offer, though, if there's a point in the future where they actually are prepared and they do reapply, I would like you to consider this. So my daughter was in the front row there, by the way, on that scene. My, you know, two sons and my daughter, they went through the school, they loved the arts program. They get to high school, I usually send them to a Catholic school, mostly because I'm big on the Catholic education. But that's one of the one things they miss the most, is the arts program. So I just wanted to say that, and if you decide to, you know, give money to different organizations to send their kids to different schools, I would hope that maybe you consider the taxpayers, and maybe do a capitated voucher. So if it's nine thousand dollars, I believe, Mrs. Kurtz, you said that last time, why don't you give us forty-five hundred? You keep the forty-five hundred, and if the school is all that, then let the free market decide, and let us decide where to send our kids. Thank you.
Suzanne Britis, 319 Austin Drive. Going to ask the board to deny the application. I feel this would be a student-centered decision. Nothing about the application or tonight's presentation gives any indication that this charter school has the potential to provide any sort of quality education. Our current state laws regarding charter school oversight are extremely deficient, and do not even begin to provide the protections the children would need, given what we've witnessed here, to ensure they receive quality education. The kids won't get a do-over. It's what, what they get the first time around is, is what they get. And there's no information that has given the impression that this school would be successful, or that there are people involved capable of attempting to ensure success. So again, I'd like to see the board deny this application.
Mike Zabel, 1212 Morgan Avenue, Drexel Hill. Is there a single parent who would ever contemplate sending their child to this proposed school? No. Members of the board, I was prepared to come here and talk to you about things like the superiority of the arts program at Upper Darby, what an experience it is to go to the Arts Gala, and see things like the kindergartners who can, who have a choir put together, to the middle schoolers who have a jazz band that just blew me away, or our, one of our great prides, the, the Upper Darby High Schoolers who perform in summer stage. I was prepared to talk about all that, and wonder how in the world somebody could think we needed a charter school for the arts, when we have such a wonderful program. I was prepared to talk about that. I was prepared to talk about the application itself. I've, I've written a letter to you, and I've submitted comments to that before. I don't understand how you proofread an application if you intend to take it seriously, and don't come across Ben Salem in there. I think that shows a level of disregard and disrespect for our students. I was prepared to talk about that. What I'd really like to talk about today, though, is what we saw today, which is an insulting waste of our time. We have an applicant who learned he was an applicant today. We have a man answering questions who's not even going to be involved with how the school is formed. This is a waste of our time, and they should apologize for it. When they said, frequently, I forget which question it was, about the glaring deficiency in the application, he said, "Well, obviously, this is going to be fixed or developed down the line." I don't know how you can have any confidence in their ability to do that. I don't think there's anything obvious about what they're going to implement. I was a schoolteacher myself for a number of years, and if I read that application, I would have given it an F. But I've also given, I've had students go up and give reports, and let's say they have a bad report, and you give them a chance to get up and speak about it, give them a little, little room to expand. It's pretty clear, they're making this up as they go along. They're just making it up. They don't have the expertise that's needed. They think now, if they can say whatever they, you guys need to hear now to get through, who knows what's actually, would actually show up if you actually put this school in place. It's scary. Our children deserve better than this. Our community doesn't want it, they don't need it. I'm a state representative for this area, and I can tell you, I've heard from, I talk to dozens of constituents every day, no one has expressed support for this charter school. No one, not to me. There is no community support for this. It is an embarrassment. Please reject this.
Thank you. That ends our public comment time. At this point, we're going to take questions from the board. If you don't mind, I'll kick it off. I did have a couple questions. When will your staff begin if your school were to be approved with the start date of September 2019?
Well, we're, we're a recruit for teachers, for psychologists, for other members, and, and other educational members that will get the school going. I hear everything everybody's saying. I'm an educator as, right now, currently. I teach at a military school. Essence of discipline. I'm actually a vet myself. I believe in what the school- I believe in what the school is having to offer. I don't look at it as though it's taking away from anybody's community when we're asking for people to come and apply, and they did. They showed up, we, I was part of the board. I don't care if I just learned that, you know, or yesterday when we discussed this.
I think, for the, I mean, let's, and I, and we'll give you a chance to give a closing remark, but there was a question posed, I think you answered it. I would simply add a concern that I presume the board would have, is how can you answer a question when you haven't seen the application yet?
That was going to be my final question.
Okay.
I do just want to point out to the community again that Dr. Kurtz is an applicant that continues to, you know, he writes the applications for these charter applicants. He, you know, attested on record that he will not be part of the school. There's a lot of vague and unclear language throughout the application. You know, just, even if you just look at the schedule that's proposed, there's very little instructional time in the core areas. And my next question, and then I'm finished for the night, is how will you, how will your instructional program increase student achievement?
Dr. Kurtz?
Oh, okay, I thought Janet would take that. Basically, looking at the schedule, you see the number of periods proposed to be set aside for academic instruction. Those periods, basically, when you add up the minutes and time, is an extremely large part of the school day. Kids will be evaluated based on their needs by their teachers. Class size is small, so our expectation is that they'll have the ability to reach more kids on a daily basis, that there will be reading and math specialists available, there will be additional help available with some aids for the younger grades, that there is special education available.
Thank you, Dr. Kurtz. I asked you how your.
There are teachers signed for EL instruction, and in all these cases, we have no question in our mind that we will be able to do as much, if not more, with our children. We have a full-day kindergarten scheduled right from the first, and we just know that the package together with integration of the arts is going to make a difference. And we're basing that on the fact that there are a number of schools for the arts that have started in the state and that are all proving to be very successful.
We all do respect Dr. Kurtz, your.
Not only are they doing it with academics, but with the arts, and that is why it was determined that an arts education program is what.
Your colleague would like to speak on this question.
I would like to add to what Dr. Kurtz has said by talking about how integrating the arts into the academics has resulted in greater student achievement. There are some reports about this in the research, and it talks about how when you focus on the arts, it allows children to be more creative and think in more imaginative ways. So, having a campus or having an environment that is focused on the arts, we're going to have that bent, that orientation, where our staff will understand that they're working with students who are there because of their passion, because of their creativity and imagination, and work that in as a major way of providing instruction and lessons, so, and using materials that also promote creativity because the students are oriented that way.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
I was going to ask, but I don't think we, I can get an answer because the business manager's not here. I wanted to know the go, no-go number for the number of students that have to be enrolled for the school to open, based on the budget, but is that not something we're going to answer tonight? Okay. Then, how about, what happens if the facility on Rockburn Road, right, this particular facility is not available, either because of zoning issues or otherwise? Is there a backup location within the district that you've explored in case that becomes unavailable for some reason? And whoever is best able to answer that, feel free.
Well, truthfully, the fact is that we are expecting that that site will be approvable and that we will get it. However, if for some reason it becomes unavailable, then it would be up to the charter group, the board, to find another suitable location and submit that to the board for approval. We can't just move the school to another site once the application's been approved without board approval.
Just to clarify, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Obviously, at that point, have to look throughout the entire geographic Upper Darby community to see if there would be another site available.
Dr. Kurtz, just to clarify, for the record, there's no, there's no, there's no standing, Dr. Kurtz?
You never know.
Dr. Kurtz, there's no standing board, correct?
There's just a, but right now, there's just a small board of about a dozen people who are part of the founding board.
Well, let's, well, this is, well, this would be news.
Then there would be nine elected board members.
Okay, Dr. Kurtz?
They would establish their own leadership.
Dr. Kurtz?
The interim would put together the committee to start doing the recruitment of staff.
Okay.
Once an administrator would be designated, he or she would put together the process of staffing and so forth.
Dr. Kurtz?
Recruitment of students would be an ongoing process. 160 at this point is a, is a good healthy number to start with.
Okay, Dr. Kurtz?
This interview, can we please have live people that are in the room answer the questions?
I, you've brought news to the tribunal as it relates to a, some form of a board, because I believe it was you that specifically said at the last hearing that no such board exists at this time. So, I'm going to actually pose a question to our applicant. Who is that board?
Well, when I first became a part of the board, we did have a.
No, I'd like, do you have names? Of specific individuals? No, 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 this is a question for the applicant, because the applicant is, it's a legal requirement that there be an applicant as part of the analysis. So, I must ask the applicant, who specifically is a member of your board?
I don't have every name.
Do you have, do you have meeting minutes?
No.
Do you have, have you actually had standing meetings?
No.
Okay.
So, this is a school that would offer dance, music, theater training.
Okay.
Two of the proposed, all right, well, now, one of the proposed board members and the applicant have studios. One has a dance studio, you have a music studio, Mr. Taylor. So, what is in place to prevent a conflict of interest so that your students don't start showing up in these studios? You have, with this school, you would have a pool of possible studio members, folks that would attend the studio, and that, I'm just wondering if there's something in place to make sure that doesn't happen?
Well, I mean, things are being put in place for that, but to give you an honest answer, that is structured, it's not structured at this moment. So, there's not a studio that's going to be there as soon as the door opens. My music studio, and it gives that I will provide, will be ongoing. So, we will set stuff up and, as it go along. And the dance hall, I don't know anything about how that would operate.
Anyone else have any questions? At this time, I, do you have anything further?
I think we will give the applicant and Dr. Kurtz, we've heard from Dr. Kurtz, but specifically, I think the, we'll give a closing remark to the applicant as a final pitch to the, to the board.
Like I was going to state before, I accepted a role yesterday, but I've been a part of the board, as I was asked by Dr. Collins. I've been to the school, I've walked through the community, I've seen the parents that want, want their children to be students there. I thought it was amazing, the things that I saw, how beautiful the school is, and I wanted to do it. I wanted to be a part of it, and I still do. I believe that it would benefits the community, and it would go abroad. It wouldn't just be bringing in Upper Darby students, it would bring in students from all over. Just in my neighborhood, I live in Upper Darby, I see students every day getting on the bus, going out to Chester Charter. I see students going out to Philadelphia schools. So, my thing is, if that, if we have a centralized location, especially designed for the arts, and these are gifts that people volunteer, I've seen many people come and want to be a part of this. I understand that, you know, the rejection, but for the most part, this is an add-on, this is a benefit. This is something that can help draw more attention to the district itself, to have a school specifically designed to exonerate the arts, music, artwork, everything, murals. There are college students who are coming to the board meetings, offering their talents. So, I believe that it could work. And I know that it seems a little hazy, or that, I really didn't see the application myself, but I believe that it is an ongoing process, and I believe the goal was to give back to the community. That's what we all, in the long run, want to do. So, that's my closing remarks.
Okay. Anything further, are you guys, I guess? Okay. All right, with that, let me go back to my agenda. We've completed the public presentation for this evening, January 31st, with regard to the review of the Upper Darby Charter School for the Arts application. There have been a number of documents that we are going to add into the list of exhibits that included a series of documents that were shared from the applicant as relates to evidence of support from their perspective, so that will be added in. We added in earlier the official recommendation of the review committee, as well as documents in a binder form. So, that will be referenced as part of the record. I've also added the PowerPoint that was reviewed this evening as a separate standalone exhibit as well. Unless there are any further questions, the hearing will be concluded, and the board, I believe, will be acting on this application in, at its February 12th meeting. So, there would be action at February 12th with a subsequent adjudication, one way or the other. If there's any questions, we can certainly talk off the record, but the hearing is now closed.